Welcome to another edition of Cohasset Common, a special edition focusing on the upcoming annual town meeting. With me today is the Chair of the Advisory Committee, Rob Hillman, and the Chair of the Cohasset Select Board, Kerry Thompson. Welcome, both of you, to this special edition of Cohasset Common.
Thank you, Chris.
Today, we're going to be looking at the warrant, which by the time you watch this show should be in your homes. It looks like this, and there's 21 very important articles. The town residents serve as a legislative body of the Town of Cohasset. So everyone will come out to the gym Monday, May 2, 7:00 PM here. We're at the high school today in the gym in the back of the high school, the Sullivan Gymnasium, and every registered voter can participate. So you'll come in, you'll register at the door, and you'll come in and take a seat. You should bring the warrant with you. And again, we're going to go over what's on the warrant and some of the hot topics. So let's jump right in.
Go ahead.
So one of the things that you kind of find a little bit different is that the first article, which has historically been the annual town report, is a recognition of citizens and employees for particular service to the town. Historically, recognition has kind of been sprinkled through the warrant, and there's been a moment of silence for folks who've passed away. This time, again, at the recommendation of Town Council, who actually does this in another community, it's all been rolled into the first article. And I think it seems a very appropriate way to start the meeting, to recognize folks for service who have retired and then have a moment of silence.
I think it's a great idea to start with this at the beginning of our meeting. It sets the tone for a positive rest of the evening.
Absolutely. No, when I saw it on the initial draft warrant, I noticed that it was usually acceptance of reports or something like that. But it does, it sets a nice tone. I hadn't thought about it that way.
So that's something a little bit new. So then the next two articles are also what I would call somewhat ministerial. The first is the acceptance of the annual town report, which will be available online, and there'll be hard copies for those who'd like it at the Town Clerk's office, and I believe we'll have them at the library. And this year, there are no reports of committees, so we'll be able to jump right over Article 3 and then get to the single biggest article on the warrant, which is the operating budget.
Yes.
Now, the operating budget went through lots and lots of discussions with both the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, all the towns, departments, and I think, Rob, it was a really good discussion.
It was. I think it's impossible to emphasize enough how much work and how much work in public goes into the rolling up of the budget. It is line by line. You know, every penny that the town spends has to be appropriated, and it has to be appropriated by town meeting. That's what you do when you vote a budget. Correct me if I'm wrong. And then the money becomes available for expenditure in the subsequent year. And there's a hard stop limit to the amount of money that is projected to come in from various sources, and that has to be allocated across a wide variety of priorities. So the way it works, at least from the advisory, I mean, we're the advisory committee. We advise. It's what we do. But in other communities, a committee in our position is referred to as a finance committee, and it reviews specifically budgets. We review everything that goes on the warrant, everything for town meeting, and make a recommendation. But the budget's the big one. And budgets begin to roll up in the fall. The various departments do their pro forma budgets. They talk about priorities. The Select Board has budget priorities. The Advisory Committee has budget priorities. And Chris's office and the town's finance director work with all the various departments to roll it all up. And advisory, what we do is we ask, as the budgets become available, shortly after the new year, the fire chief and assistant chief come in with their budget. The police chief comes in with the police budget, the DPW, IT. Any other department we would like to see comes in, makes a presentation, and we ask them to talk about their top line. What's new? What's unexpected? You know, what are new needs and significant changes from the prior year? And then ultimately, we don't vote on the individual budgets, but we make suggestions back and forth. And at the risk of boring our listeners absolutely to death, there are chunks of budgets that are operating. Pay your police officers, pay your DPW employees. And then there are capital items. And capital items can go down a different, kind of take a different route to the budget and come through the Capital Budget Committee. But advisory participates in that, and the chiefs and department heads come in, and they talk to us because it makes no sense to talk about operating and capital as if they're in two different silos. They come in and make a general presentation. Our experience, you know, this year in particular, is that, you know, every department came to us well-prepared, a highly professional, well-done budget. It had obviously been vetted before it came to us. We asked questions. Some changes were made in response to questions we had. And importantly, it's really important because you hear a lot of public discussion about transparency. This is very transparent. We sat on Zoom for two hours every Wednesday night for three months with these documents up on the screen, asking, every question we asked, somebody with a professional responsibility to do so was there to answer. And we were satisfied with our answers. And, you know, we're certainly, you know, we don't run a kind of a public forum meeting, but if citizens had questions about aspects of the budget during our budget process, you know, they could have been free to send them the advisory committee and say, hey, I'm concerned about X, you know? And we would have been responsive to that. We get a little lonely sometimes in advisory. I suspect that the Select Board is anything but lonely, and I wouldn't necessarily swap places. But it's a, and I'll make a plug for my colleagues. We have every, all nine seats are filled, and all nine seats are filled with really bright, really engaged people. So the town is getting its money's worth, which is to say, no money at all, because we're all volunteers, at a close analysis. Now, the thing I didn't mention in this is the biggest part of our budget, which is our school department.
Right.
And they live in a slightly different world. It's a department of the town. They share in the town budget. They, I don't like to use the word "they."
It's a "we." It's inclusive "we."
Yeah. The town is the town, and the school department is every much as part of the town as the police department, the DPW, or the library. But they have a special status. They have, there are statutes that define what schools and school committees do, and they have a lot of autonomy over their own budget, and we absolutely respect that. And this year, it was, it was good. We worked closely with the school committee to deal with some, you know, I think people who watched the meetings realized that there was, there was some concerns about their, about the budget. And they were able to find ways to make their numbers work. Again, "they." But to make the number work. And we have a balanced town budget, which shouldn't surprise anybody because we have to by statute. Don't have a choice there. But I think we're going to be, and "we" means everybody. All these boards are bringing a budget to the town meeting floor that's sound, it's level service at least. And while, you know, no department gets everything that it would ideally want to have, we think that the important things are covered. So that was a long speech about budgets. I hope it was helpful. But that's my conception of how sort of we, in the advisory committee, fit into the process.
And I think you make a great point. So many hours of work, months and months and months of work, go into a town meeting like this, especially when it comes to our budget. We have so many town staffers, employees, but also boards and committees that are doing the work and looking at every single line of this. And the fiscal health of Cohasset is of utmost importance to all of us, to the Select Board, to the Advisory Committee, to our town manager. It's critical. And looking at a budget, I always say you can tell a lot about what a town values and what a town cares about and what our priorities are. And I think that we've done a really good job, especially during the past couple of years, navigating an international pandemic and still keeping our town fiscally healthy. So I'm proud of the operating budget, and I'm grateful to all the work that goes into it.
Okay. Well, I thank you both. There was a lot of debate. If anyone wants to see any of the meetings, they're on the town's YouTube channel. You can watch the Advisory Committee meetings, watch Select Board meetings. And the budget book will be up online the week before town meeting, and people can read to their hearts and content. There's a lot of information in there. Again, as Rob said, it's level funded. The overall budget increases just a tad more than 3%, but the tax rate does not go more than 2.5%. Though individual tax shares change depending on value, the overall tax base only goes up 2.5%. So, and again, there's a lot in there. There's a new second grade teacher, where we've been able to rejuggle the IT department a little bit and move another percent of the central budget, which takes a little more pressure off the school budget. And we're doubling down on cybersecurity, which is super critical.
Very important.
IT is really important. So there's a lot of work going on behind the scenes to maintain a robust and secure network, which is critical for everything we do. And we're continuing to make strides in public works and our facilities department maintaining buildings. A lot of good stuff in there. Again, please go take a look at that budget book. And again, lots and lots of discussion. If anyone wants to watch any of the meetings, they're on the town's YouTube channel. So Town of Cohasset YouTube. And each committee has its own little slot, so you can find those committees. So that's Article 4. And both the Select Board and Advisory Committee voted unanimously to recommend to town meeting approval of Article 4.
Somebody asked me a question when they saw the warrant, another resident of my house, in fact. And since all the children moved away, the listening audience can figure, can use their logical skills to figure out who. But when you look at the committee votes and you see, you know, Advisory Committee approves 6 to 0, but wait, there are nine members. That means that when we took the final vote on the budget, there are only six present.
Who was present, yeah.
That was actually unusual. We have very few dissenting votes, and we voted to recommend, I think, every article. Sometimes you see 6 to 0 to 1. That doesn't mean we had a tie. People will abstain from time to time.
For certain reasons. Sometimes they're personal or conflicts of interest or other things.
There was a, when it came to CPC, there was a projected, proposed support for an organization I'm on the board of.
Right.
So I had to recuse myself. So don't read, I think, anything into those votes just because either the first number isn't the full board or you see an abstention. And I don't think there are a lot of dissenting votes in it, but I think that's a good guide for how to, if you're looking for tea leaves, there aren't really any tea leaves here.
Right. And I do think, too, if you see certain votes, we don't really have any for this town meeting in particular, but if boards are split or there are several dissenting opinions, we usually try to be open about that and share that and have people speak on both sides.
Sure. So I'm sorry, Chris, I sort of interrupted.
No, 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 no. This is a big, we're having a good conversation. Again, so residents can go into town meeting understanding a lot of these conversations. It's, so, again, to point out what Rob said, well, I'll mention the votes, but they're in the warrant. And the motions, which actually make all this work, will be coming out next week, too. They'll be up online, and you'll get them when you come to the meeting. But there'll be a little more information in there if anything has changed for any reason. So Article 4, operating budget. Article 5 is unpaid bills from prior years. Every once in a while, things slip through the cracks a little bit. And during the pandemic, which unfortunately we were still in this last year, a couple of things did slip through, and you'll see five of them in there. A couple of them are for uniforms. There's a legal bill for the sewer department and a couple of things involving the RTF. They're all minor. We actually validated them. They all have to be paid. So again, there's been a recommendation, both boards unanimously, to recommend a town meeting. These get approved. And again, their services were rendered. Unfortunately, a couple of things slipped through the cracks, but we do have to pay them. And we're doing extra, extra special care to make sure we keep this to as low a number as possible, if at all. So that's Article 5.
Years ago, this used to be an annual major problem. Many years ago, before your time, we'd have unpaid bills.
I've heard, I've heard stories of those times.
Five or more numbers on the wrong side of the decimal. So this is, this is not, you know, this is a housekeeping thing. These are services the town received and should be paid for, so.
So that's Article 5. Article 6, supplemental appropriation. There's only one, and that involves the way that money gets passed through to 143 TV. So several years ago, the state, in an effort to make it more public, required that pass through. And all the money the town gets from Verizon and Comcast for the TV station gets passed through to the TV station. We're actually in the studio of 143 TV.
Shout out to 143 TV.
Exactly. And so what has to happen is it has to be transferred by active town meeting in a process. So it happens twice a year. It happens in the spring, and it happens in the fall. So this, the number you see in the warrant will hopefully be updated all the way through the fourth quarter number. Right now, it's $60,000. That's the third quarter number. Quarters 1 and 2 got transferred back at special town meeting last fall. So this is just the transfer of money through to 143 TV. And again, that was recommended unanimously, except for one abstention on the Select Board. So, and I don't quite remember what that one was about.
That was Cory.
Oh, that's right. Cory's on the board.
Our vice chair, Cory Evans, is on the board of 143 TV, so.
I should remember that.
Yeah.
Article 7. So every year, the money goes into various stabilization funds. This year, there's four transfers. The first is the transfer to capital stabilization, which is just shy of $2 million. There's money going into the OPEB trust fund. That's a contribution the town has committed to make, and this helps fully fund the funding plan that was adopted by the Advisory Committee and the Select Board on the recommendation of the OPEB Advisory Committee. And there's money from both sewer revenue and water revenue from those respective funds going to their own capital stabilization funds, which is a good government practice, and it's something that's important for them to do. So those are the four transfers. Any?
A couple of things. I think it might be helpful. I know it was helpful when OPEB issues came to the Advisory Committee a couple of years ago. And I had the incisive question, uh, what's OPEB?
So, right. That's a good point. We use acronyms all the time.
Yep.
Other post-employment benefits. The pension system, the town funds, is through Norfolk County. Once somebody retires, it's Norfolk County's responsibility. We've paid in. The teachers, it's Master Retirement System. The state actually pays into that. When somebody retires as a teacher, that's paid for. But the medical benefits, which are mostly a Medicare supplemental plan when you hit 65, that's actually paid for by the town. That's an obligation that we have. And for the longest time, that was just kind of pay-as-you-go. So if somebody retires, you just pay the bill. Nobody put any money aside for those things. And once upon a time, it didn't matter. It wasn't that big a number. Everyone knows healthcare costs have gone up. The town's done a great job the last six, seven years of containing healthcare costs. That said, to ensure that there was transparency, again, I use that word. The federal, or the national authorities on accounting practices required governments to disclose this information. Quite frankly, nobody knew. So more than a decade ago, this started to become public, and now it's something we actually report on. And now the town has a funding plan. So then the town is putting money away every year to pay for future retiree medical benefits. And that's what this is. The plan couples with the fully funding of the pension system, which also is in progress. And once the pension is fully funded on the Norfolk County side from, you know, arrears from the past, the extra money from that will continue to flow into this medical reserve. So there's a plan to fully fund it. It's going to take more than a decade. That said, we're on a path. And we're one of the few committees that actually have that kind of plan.
There's two things about that. One is it's another example of a lot of work by volunteers, very talented volunteers. And the other is, you know, kind of lurking behind good budget practices, dealing with future liabilities and whatnot, is, you know, people talk about it a lot, but we have a bond rating. And the bond rating is the cost of capital.
Right.
And it's the cost of future improvements. And these are the kinds of things that keeps that rating at AAA. And so it's, it's important to understand that, you know, it's not, it's doing the right thing and reaping a certain amount of benefit for it. The other issue here that is worth kind of flagging and then moving on is that the roughly $2 million in capital stabilization is, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, that's an annual number that's been transferred to capital stabilization at a flat number for years now, right?
Well, it actually, the number has ratcheted up to this number, and this is where it's kind of capped at at this point.
Okay.
And that's from a decision I made a number of years ago to at least set a floor of capital spending. So as debt was paid off, the money would roll into the capital stabilization fund. And we're almost done paying off that old debt. The challenge is there was no accelerator built into it, and that's a conversation that's ongoing because obviously, things cost more and there's more expenses. So one of the conversations that are going to be ongoing, I expect, a lot in the next fiscal year or after this town meeting will be how to find ways to fund that. Unfortunately, the pandemic challenge has really been, it's kept our budget very tight. The town is still in good shape, but it's not, the new growth number has been tight. The state aid has been tight. And the town, most of the town's revenue comes from property taxes.
Right.
That doesn't really change, except that by that fixed amount every year, the max fixed amount. And as we go forward, I think the town is going to have some more robust conversations about how to fund capital and how it wants to set priorities for programs and services.
I think for people, I'm sorry, Kerry.
Maintaining the AAA bond rating is of utmost importance to everyone in town. Elected officials, staff, volunteers. That's critical, so I'm glad that Rob mentioned it.
And also for people who are following along on their warrants at home, that close to $2 million number comes back when we talk about the report of the Capital Budget Committee.
That's the very next article.
And there we are.
The good transition.
There we are.
So Article 8 is the capital improvements budget, and there's two sections to it. The first is enterprise funds, and you'll see that there's, there's two water projects and two sewer projects. The, the water projects are actually, at least the big, the biggest one's a little ahead. And the reason it's in, and again, it needs to be approved, the town is going to be seeking funding from the state revolving fund. And the goal is to approve it, get it approved, and then ask for funding. And the state could give us a very low interest rate and potentially even buy down some of the principles. So that's, it's important to get this approved. That work on Beechwood, South Mainville won't happen for another year or more, but it's important to get it approved now. The two sewer projects are current. And as you can see, the recommendation from Capital Budget was unanimous on these. So those are the, and those are all being paid for by those funds. So the water projects come from water revenue. The sewer projects from sewer revenue. The next list, and that's 23 projects, are all town projects. And the, as you can see, the single largest number of them involve the schools. And what's in here is, there's a couple of new vehicles for Public Works. Public Works could do an amazing job. They keep things going for decades.
They do.
That said, they do need to have new equipment from time to time. They can only MacGyver things so often. And it's important if we want to maintain paving and plowing and maintenance. There's a couple of, you know, that we have the annual replacement of police vehicles. There's a few things for the fire department, which includes some new personal protective gear. That's the equipment firefighters wear into burning buildings. And there's a, a couple of, and there's a number of things in the schools, including some new furniture. There's some upgrades to the middle school and some retiring in classrooms and the cafeteria that's going on at Deer Hill. So really important things there. And again, you can see all the votes on there. And as Rob said, the fact that there's a less than 4-0 vote doesn't mean somebody, it just means somebody wasn't at that particular meeting when they voted or when they voted on something.
But we all voted for these unanimously.
At the end of the day, the big votes, the Select Board, the Advisory Committee, and water and sewer did vote unanimously on the package, so.
Yeah, and I think it's worth saying that the, these things are reviewed by advisory and presumably by the Select Board in connection with these budgets. But the Capital Budget Committee is another layer of review.
Yes. Good checks and balances with all these committees.
They're meticulous.
Yes, they are.
And sometimes, and I respect and like all of them, but it's as if it's their own money.
They're tough.
Which is good.
Yes.
Which is great. It's a real, I think people can be confident that if something got, you know, and there are projects that came to them, you know, there are documents that were discussed at meetings, including joint meetings of the Capital Budget Committee, the Select Board, and the Advisory Committee, where, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I think Capital Budget said, you know, we had $2 million to recommend other than the enterprise funds, and we had $4 million in asks. And here's all the things that didn't make the list.
Right.
And so it's a very, it's tough. And they have to say no, we all do, you know, to a lot of things that would be worthwhile, but we only can spend what we have.
That said, the projects are prioritized. And again, the town has really upped its game departmentally and otherwise to really give things a real good vet. So what's in here has been very well-vetted.
Yep.
And it's important, and it needs to be done. And I said, there's a lot of projects in here. Some may seem small. For example, we just redid the AC in the band room over at the Deer Hill. Well, that room became a little oven, unfortunately.
Good, I'm in the town band.
So there you go.
I strongly endorse that expenditure.
And that was something that happened last year. So there's something in here as well for an AC heater split in the middle school health clinic. Well, that wasn't ever done originally. And so the building's been reconfigured to make it more of a middle school. So the things that weren't done when the building was built, they need to be tweaked and fixed. So again, a lot in there. And for more information on that, you can go to the town's website and also watch the Capital Budget meetings. The next few are going to be a little more ministerial, I'd say. But let's walk through them. Article 9, this creation of a revolving fund for after-hours building inspections. So that's a mouthful, but basically what it is is that there's a number of projects coming. The Cohasset Department, if anyone's seen, the hotel is gone.
Yep. A lot of action on the harbor lately.
There's a proposal to do commercial condos up behind the self-storage area up on Cituate Hill. There's another proposal to do work There's another proposal to do work that the planning boards approved at One Pleasant, a rebuild of that building. And so some of that work's going to come within allowable hours, but on week, like on a Saturday or on before or after regular hours. And the owners have to pay for it. That said, we have to contract for the service. So this would set up a revolving fund, so the money comes in and it goes right back out for that particular purpose. It doesn't get mixed into the budget. So we didn't have a revolving fund for this. It hadn't been a very big deal, but it's going to be because of some of these
Which is all good.
Exactly.
It is all good.
From a revenue standpoint.
Oh, yeah. So it also, again, it keeps it segregated like it's supposed to be, right? It's supposed to be just for that purpose. And you can see in the next article, this is an annual renewal. There's a number of revolving funds that do various purposes. Library printing fund, the conservation and stormwater fund. So when people pay fees for conservation, it goes back into a fund that pays for the agent, for example. That was a great modification that was made collaboratively with the conservation commission several years ago. Food permits, elder affairs and rec programs. When people pay into that, it stays in this fund that pays for the program. And it supports other programs, too. So those are just the annual updates. They have to be set every year.
Yep.
The Article 11 is one-time costs. Those are things that are, as they say, one-time. There's two items in here. One is for the finance department, for assessors in particular, subset, they need to do a commercial industrial revow, and that's going to cost about $12,000. It didn't make sense to put it into the actual budget because it's only once every, I think it's five years for this. So it's just a one-time expense that they'll need to bring in some consults. It's a very niche thing. They want to do it the right way. And the other is, actually, it links to a capital project. So as part of some of the cybersecurity work that's being done and some of the upgrades to move some of the town's systems into the cloud, which will be more efficient.
Yeah.
We're prepaying for services for several years. Because it's cheaper. If you prepay for three years' worth of service, you get the first-year price as opposed to
And digital storage, as we know, is critical in the public and private sectors now.
Correct. Capital did not feel comfortable including that in the capital budget. And unfortunately, we can't prepay for services in an annual budget. It's a protection for the taxpayers so people don't, you know, spend money in advance. You can in an article. You can actually use an article to prepay. So that's why it's in here. And again, it's been vetted. It's going to save the town, I believe it's something north of $100,000 by prepaying this money.
Yeah, it's a big enough chunk that it matters.
So that's why it's in here. So those are the two one-time cost articles. Article 12, it's just an annual article. Chapter 91 deals with areas that are in the title lands along the coast. It's a complicated statute, we'll get into, but why it's being triggered this year in particular is the work that'll be done on the Parker Ave Boat Ramp this fall. That was a project that was funded last year. Unfortunately, supply chain and other issues delayed it. We kept the price the same. The contractor's committed to a time that's of the essence.
It's still going to be completed. It's still going to be finished eventually.
Exactly. So the plan is to have it come this fall in 2022. And we kind of need that liability waiver because the state requires it if they got, because we're getting grant money. We're getting a lot of state grant money for that project. And again, both of these articles have been supported unanimously by the select board and the advisory committee. Article 13 is annual real estate exemptions. This is a renewal recommended by the Board of Assessors. These are for disabled veterans and qualified folks who meet income requirements. It gives them a little bit of a realistic tax break. Town's been doing this for years. It's something that needs to be updated annually. So that's, and there's not a lot of people who are able to take advantage of it in town, but all of them do, it matters.
Yeah, and it's important that we allow that support. I think that's, it's something that I think is passed up a lot of times during town meeting. We don't pay attention to it that much, but it's really critical, and it makes a difference in the lives of some important people in town.
I mean, it may not seem like a lot of money, but $1,000 here or $500 there really matters. And it helps keep people in their homes who really need that help. Article 14, Community Preservation Committee. There are a number of projects in this. First off, there's automatic contributions that have to be allocated. About $750,000 is coming in. It's one of the largest numbers, maybe the largest number ever in Cohasset, actually.
Oh, wow.
It might make sense to give the bumper sticker version of where CPC funds come from, by which I'm going to leave to you.
So CPC comes from two sources. There's a little surcharge on everybody's property tax bill. And the state matches revenue through the registry of deeds. For a long time, that number was flattered, declining because the state hadn't changed the numbers. They changed the formula a couple of years ago, changed the registry of deeds fees. And considering the number of properties that have turned over, not just in Cohasset but everywhere else, it's raised the revenue substantially.
It adds up.
It most certainly does. So the town's match, which was getting down to 10, is now, I believe, up over 25% now. So we're getting a lot of money back, a lot of supplemental money because of the money the town sets aside itself.
And then on the back end, the statute limits or defines where towns, to what kinds of projects they can be applied. And we have a committee to that effect.
Correct. So the Community Preservation Committee, which is appointed by the select board, has a number of statutory members, the three citizens at large, and they can allocate money to projects in three areas. Open space and recreation, historical preservation, and affordable housing. Those are the three areas. And they can pay money to help support the work, you know, for legal opinions or administrative support. So what are in this are six new, well, five new and one old funded project. There's a couple, there's a historical project at Minus Light Engineering Building. That's the building that's next to the Light Keepers Cottage. That the harbor master uses is to repaint and fix it up. There's money to the Affordable Housing Trust for affordable housing purposes. There's money to digitize some, the collection of the Historical Society, I believe it is. Work at 60 Elm, which is great. The, both for doors and windows and roofing work. That's the town's subsidized housing complex. By the way, there's another project that's not in here that will be at town meeting. There's $100,000 for the repair of the roof at the library, which is a historical structure. Believe it or not, that building is 100 years old.
Yep.
And it is on the local register of historic places. So CPC has supplementally allocated that. You'll see that in the motions you'll get at home. You'll, I mean, you'll see the night of the meeting. So there's another $100,000 project in there, which I'm going to have to have both of the boards officially. Actually, the select board's already voted on it.
Select board's already voted. We love our library.
I think you voted on it already, too.
We might have, if not, we have a meeting on the 27th.
And then there's money for a bond. There was acquisitions of land on King Street a number of years ago. It's a bond payment for that. And then CPC is extending two projects, one at Milliken Field and one at the Barnesville Complex for another year. The money normally needs to be allocated and spent within three years. If it isn't, that's be a good reason for it. So that's CPC. There was, again, unanimous votes to recommend across the board on these projects. Article 15, Town Hall Building. Now, the Town Hall Building Project Committee remains in very active work.
Yes, they do.
And last fall, $750,000 was set aside for future work for the project. The committee came, met with advisory, met with select board, and had a real good, and met with capital, had a big conversation about going down a different path. And again, you could explain this better than I.
I do have a little bit of experience with it. So the Town Hall Building Committee wants to approach the project by retaining what they're calling a CM at risk. I mean, it's a construction manager at risk. And it's just a different way to contract a public building project. Instead of having traditional bids, which would have one number risk built in, a CM at risk contract moves the risk of overages. It's accepted by the construction manager. And there is, you know, there are contingent funds for these things. But if the construction manager brings the project in within the number, which they often do, instead of that simply being supplemental profit, it actually goes back to the owner. And then the CM hires the subs, and, you know, it's all bid and, you know, it's a public procurement, but they manage the project. So you would typically have an OPM, an owner's project manager. And I know that the town has dealt with very capable OPMs. And they would then seek by, through a bid process, a CM. And, you know, they're generally recognizable names, like, you know, Gil, I'm not stumping for anybody here, but Gilbane Construction or some other large sophisticated builder. And with that team in place, between the owner, the owner's project manager, and the CM, it's just, it's the modern way to run a big project. So the advisory committee strongly endorsed it. We think it's the best way to go forward.
Select board strongly endorses this as well. This is how we keep this project moving forward. And again, talk about countless hours. The Town Hall Building Committee has done so much work to get us to where we are now. So we need to keep moving forward.
And this, again, keeps the project moving forward. There's no final number. There's no final detailed plan. What this would do would be to authorize $200,000 of that previously set aside $750,000 to help fund the CM at risk in advance.
Yes.
Because you need to bring them on in advance. And again, as Rob said, the plan, the goal of it would be to save us substantial funds. Now, there'll be more conversations this summer. What this does is just keep the project moving forward. This will have to come back to town meeting with a final, with a final package. And it's just, this is a way to get it there.
Yep.
Everyone's seeing the world as it is today, the international crises and the challenges. And it's complicated, the project, not just our project, but every building project in America.
Yeah.
So this is a way to minimize that cost impact and to get the best value for the taxpayer of Cohasset. So the plan would be to have this happen and then to come back, hopefully in the fall, with a little more details to next steps. So that's where that is. And again, so this is to continue the conversation about the project. It's not a final answer, and the money was set aside, which is good. So it's not asking for anything new.
Right, so it's allocation of previously appropriated funds.
Yep.
So that's Article 15. Article, and again, if you want to learn more about it, the advisory committee discussed it, and the select board discussed it, and the Town Hall Building Committee has also discussed it. And again, the meetings are all online. Transfer of land to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Yes, this is another exciting
So there's two parcels that are being recommended for transfer. One on Mill Lane and one on Heather Jive. Neither of them are built. And the trust would like, the trust looked at, like, every parcel it had on practically. And these are the first two they thought had some value for potential housing. So this would transfer those parcels to the trust for affordable housing purposes. They're talking about maybe selling one of them and using the proceeds to further fund affordable housing. I think that's the one on Heather Lane, but it really does depend on what's available. And then Mill Lane, they think they can actually get something built there that was a little undersized. Obviously, they have to go through all the regular processes and all of that to get approval. But this is another concrete step to trying to get some additional affordable housing constructed in Cohasset.
And this has been a priority for years in Cohasset. As we know, there's an affordable housing crisis everywhere in Massachusetts, not just here. But we really are trying to take steps to make it a little bit easier to live here and more welcoming of a community for people that wouldn't necessarily be able to afford our average house price.
So apart from the bigger projects that are in process, the Affordable Housing Trust is now shepherding the 808 route.
They are. That's another exciting project.
And that's at West Corner. They're working, they've partnered with Habitat for Humanity. And that project is now going through zoning and planning review. So the goal is for that to happen. And when that happens, Habitat Projects are a hands-on community project.
Yes.
Be very exciting for anybody who wants to participate to help build those homes. Those are, I think it's the discussions for two units at that site. And that's literally right at the corner of Town at West Corner, by the corner of Holland and Hingham. But more on that. But this is, you know, the trust is constantly looking for ways to continue that process. So these would be the next kind of in the pipeline. So that's Article 16. Article 17, it's a really big, it takes up a whole page.
It's a big paragraph.
I don't want anyone to get put off by this. So what it's about, so there are two, two filters, two filtering systems that the town approved last year. One is called a GAC. It's basically, it's granular activated carbon. As it was explained to me to dumb it down for me by the engineers, it's basically a very fancy commercial Brita water filter, because it's carbon, just like
It's a good way of putting it. A giant Brita filter.
A little more expensive, but the same concept. And the goal of that is to pull out PFOS, which is one of these sort of chemicals people have heard about from the town's entire water supply. So this will be done over at the main plant. And also, there's something called a chlorine gas conversion. So chlorine is also used in the water to purify it. The town used to use a, this would convert this into a safer system. Right now, so it's, it would go from a gas, which is a little more dangerous to use, to a liquid, which is, you know, something you'd like, again, people can use in their pools. It's a little more complicated than that, but same concept. It's a lot safer and easier to use. So it would convert the gas system to a safer liquid system and install this carbon filter. What this does is it reauthorizes what was done last year for the participation in what's called the state revolving fund. The state sets aside resources to subsidize water and sewer projects, in this case, a water project that meet certain criteria. So we get a low interest rate. In fact, the town's looking at a 0% interest rate as opposed to 4%.
That's pretty low, 0%.
And we have the possibility of even getting money to knock down the actual principal payments. So the town is going to save, I believe, we're talking about at least $750,000 by going this route. And we could save north of a million if we get additional
Yeah, it's a big chunk.
So really important. This is an important article. It sounds very complicated, but both projects were already approved. This just resets them so that we can participate in the state revolving fund.
There's another thing for town meeting to keep in mind, and that is that, I mean, there are plenty of people on these committees who can speak to PFOS and what a very bad thing it is. But in some discussions with the water department over the last couple of years, the Elms Meadow Well Field, which is at the end of my street at the end of Norfolk Road, that is often unusable because of PFOS concentrations. And something to bear in mind, because everyone's sensitive to water rates, is that groundwater is much cheaper than surface water. And most of Cohasset, on the good part, is we have tremendously large and reliable water supply. The bad news is mostly surface water, which is much more expensive to process, treat. Bringing the well fields online contributes a, no pun intended, stream of alternate water that will process, that will treat at a lower rate. So there's a little bit of, there are savings embedded in there. And that would be, and that's one of the distinctions between us and surrounding towns who are primarily wells.
Right.
The good news is their water's less expensive. The bad news, they run out of it.
Yep.
So this is, but the major issues here are participating in these funds that lower the costs of something that, once it was explained to us, was an obvious need.
That's a really good way of putting it.
The town was a part, was a part of a pilot project with the state to identify PFOS so we're ahead of the game, which is one of the reasons we're going to take advantage of this. Because the town partnered with the state early on. It'll allow us to participate in the state revolving fund. And as Rob said, it'll also allow us to bring the well field back online, which will be very beneficial in the long run. So that's Article 17. Article 18, again, another somewhat unusual one. It's expansion of the sewer district to include the Cook Estates. That's off Sawyer Street
Yes.
adjacent to the Deer Hill School or up the hill from the Deer Hill School. The, the area has leaching fields, septic. And unfortunately, they're starting to fail. The Board of Public Health has said
Yeah, it's a problem. We have to fix it.
Pretty much. The Board of Health has said, you got to fix it. You got to connect the sewer. And what this will do, will officially include the Cook Estate properties. And there's a map, and there's actually a parcel identifications in the warrant. It'll include them. The residents are paying the full tab on this. So I want to be clear, this is not putting more money on the taxpayer or the ratepayers. In fact, at the end of the day, there'll be more customers, so it'll actually add more revenue to the sewer department. But the residents of Cook Estates are paying for the new line. They're paying for the hookup. So this is, and again, the sewer commission has approved this. So that's, the reason it says recommendation at town meeting is they actually have to formally have a hearing to, and I believe they're doing that the week before town meeting, to officially recommend expansion of the sewer district. They've vetted this at their meetings. They're all in favor of it, but they have to have a formal act. And again, I believe that's taking place the week before town meeting. So everyone's on board. It's really, really important. And, you know, so it's, the Cook Estates needs to be included, and the residents are paying the freight to make this connection work.
Okay. A couple of things, one to bear in mind and one question, that the effect of this, and there's a very comprehensive presentation to our board, which brought me right back to undergraduate geology, literally 101. But the, the problem is that it's polluting groundwater.
Right.
And
To go back to your water point.
There you go. And then the other part of it is, there may be a question at town meeting, Chris, about what effect is this, if any, on our sewer capacity? Is this creating any unanticipated problem on that side?
To the best of my knowledge, it's just, no, the sewer commission's vetted it. There's enough capacity to take this. And to your point, the contamination that does come from this has the potential impact to town's water supply. The Water Commission has said, you need to do this, too. You need to get this out of the, out of the way. And this will do that. This will protect the town's water supply, and it will also, again, work inside the town's existing sewer capacity. So important questions. Again, there'll be, there's more information on the website, and there are some hearings that you can watch with the Board of Public Health as well that talked about this. The last two articles, actually, the last two articles really involve two citizen petitions. So two citizen petitions were filed, and one of them, the select board adopted
We did, and we're proud to adopt this.
And this is the remote participation at town meetings. And Karen, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so shout out to Tom Baker and everyone that has been promoting this idea. So thinking just about how the world has changed, how town government has changed in the past couple of years, a lot of us have gotten very used to being on Zoom, right, and doing remote meetings. And that was a big learning curve, I think, for a lot of people, but everyone is very comfortable with it now. So several citizens in town brought to us the idea that we should consider allowing remote voting for future town meetings. And this is something that is not currently allowed in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, but several other towns are working on this as well. And I'm proud of Cohasset because I think it is a cutting-edge idea. And I think it helps us to rethink about what participation in our democracy should look like, right? We obviously always want the most participation possible. We want to be inclusive to the largest amount of citizens and residents in town as possible. And one idea is to figure out a way to safely and legally allow people to attend future town meetings remotely. So this would put this into place. We would still need to get approval from the state to do this. But I think it's a really good idea, thinking about the future of town meeting, thinking about the future of active participation in town. I think it's a way to increase participation, and the select board is very excited to support this.
We had a lively discussion in the advisory committee, and we were eight to one, and one of the eight was very much on the fence. There are some considerations that I think ought to be aired and maybe people should have in mind going into town meeting. First off, the likelihood that a positive vote in this will result in any change in any reasonable amount of time is highly unlikely. The, the town would be petitioning the legislature for permission to do something new with town meeting.
Among, with some other towns, too.
There are a few other, but they tend to be towns that look a lot like us.
Right.
Suburban, you know,
No, I agree.
suburban, small towns that are, you know, forward-thinking.
Yep.
But the legislature would send this to the Elections Division at the Attorney General's Office. And this didn't occur to me, I wish it did, because it would have sounded smart. But at the time we discussed it, the AG's office is going to look at this from an equity standpoint. And that is, we're not going to let Cohasset and Sudbury and Concord have this new way of running town meeting until Beckett and Princeton and Peru are able to do the same thing.
Right.
And so if you want remote town meeting, essentially, you better start campaigning for equitable access to Wi-Fi and high-speed internet
No, it's a valid point.
across the Commonwealth.
Yeah.
Because you just, I don't think that it would be appropriate to privilege certain communities over others because they have, you know, better info. But that's not my decision. So, but there is, I think, people should bear in mind what we're doing. We're asking the legislature, legislature to make a change. That would have to be a change that applies to 351 cities and towns. So to some extent, it's symbolic. It's not going to result in Cohasset having remote elections two years from now. I don't think. I could be wrong. And there are plenty of smart people who might tell me I'm wrong, and I'm willing to be wrong. But that's, that's a sense of something that came out of the advisory committee. There's going to be a lot of discussion. And I hope really town meeting doesn't get bogged down in a lot of technical discussions. Because this is a future tense issue.
Yeah.
You know, everybody, it's natural, I did, people I know did, well, how do you do security? security? How do you, what happens if you're in the middle of town meeting and half the town's Wi-Fi goes down? You know, if half of town.
We have a power loss.
Right.
I mean, there are things to talk about.
Sure.
That are valid.
Yeah, or just bad Wi-Fi, you know, the overloaded system, whatever. You know, those, I think the proponents would say, they're solvable technical issues, and they probably are.
Yep.
But they're very much future tense. I think, you know, there are good reasons, and people have come across with, you know, issues of participatory democracy that are, that are very positive, but I do think that if you had remote town meeting, everybody needs to recognize, you'd be changing the nature of town meeting in very particular ways. Maybe they're good, but they're, certainly, you're not gonna be having town meeting in the sense we think of it now. There is something about sitting in the room, and I've been to maybe.
We're not cutting the in-person element, though. I want to clarify, we're not trying to make it completely remote.
I fully understand that.
Yeah.
And I'm not, I'm not arguing against it.
Right.
I'm just sort of issue spotting, but I think there has to be, it would change the dynamic very particularly, and I saw there's, Tom put a website together that has, that FAQs a lot of this stuff, and raises questions about how participation would work, but it seems to me if somebody's participating in town meeting, they can participate in town meeting. Best case is you have a flowering of democracy, and people who couldn't otherwise participate in town meeting participate. Worst case is it becomes a town meeting version of a comments page on a website.
Yeah.
You know, so somewhere in between those things is the difference. And I think anybody who still has the PTSD of the 2,500-person town meeting at the Music Circus many years ago will think that, you know, there may be an upper limit on, you know, the effective, you know, group of, but I don't, you know, I don't know, I think these are all things that are worth talking about. And like I said, our committee voted to approve, and the one person who, to recommend, and the one person who didn't is interested very much in different approaches to public participation, and whether the solution to low town meeting turnout is something other than an inner, you know, more like a representative town meeting or something like that.
Right.
So it wasn't, nobody just threw up their hands and said, you know, no technophobes or, you know.
Right.
So it'll be an interesting conversation. I suspect town meeting will approve it. I think they should do it with reasonable expectations of what approval will mean.
Completely. And again, you say it's symbolic, and I would say, I think symbolism matters, right?
Sure.
Especially when it comes to thinking about the future of democracy. You know, we've struggled for years to get people to come to town meeting, and I will say, those of us who've been active members in town have noticed an increase in participation the past couple of years because we have virtual options. We've noticed more people watching our meetings live on Facebook. We've seen more people coming on to Zoom. And I'm a big fan of in-person experiences, too, and I think communities need to interact and be in-person, and I would never want to take away the in-person element of town meeting, but it's interesting to think about ways in which we could have a hybrid approach in the future, which would be more inclusive for more people in town. So we're thinking ahead. It could be an interesting discussion. I agree with you, Rob. I think there are some very, you know, serious issues in terms of equity and technology and logistics that we would need to work out, but it's a really interesting idea to think about in terms of the future of our democracy.
Bear in mind that the most radical democracy in history, 5th century Athens.
Yeah.
They, they had an exercise in democratic rights, invaded Sicily, and their empire collapsed.
Correct.
Just saying, you know, it's just out there.
But Massachusetts town meetings, democratic town meetings are, in a way, kind of the original form of our country's democracy. My friends from other states always ask me what we're doing at these town meetings, and I explain it to them, and they kind of look at me strangely, but there's something very romantic about the idea of town meeting. It's the original form of our democracy.
And it takes a long time. I actually, from time to time, teach civics to middle school and high schools.
I love that.
And, and, and one of the, the Boy Scouts, there's a merit badge, citizenship in the community.
Yeah, it's important.
And you have to explain to these people, you know, boy, now, young men and young women, how town government is structured.
Yeah.
And it takes a while for them to figure out that the top of the, of the chart is town meeting.
Right.
Town meeting is the organic governing body of the community, and your board serves that.
We all work for you, for the people.
Yeah. And it, it really, when you put it out on a whiteboard and try and explain it to reasonably bright 14-year-olds, you know, you really think it all the way through.
Yeah.
And, you know, more participation, better. But honestly, I would like to see more, you know, and it would be voters who are gonna participate in town meeting, engage in the pre-town meeting process a little bit with your board.
Very much so.
And some of these other boards, so that when these things come out, these things being a warrant, you know, they know how that stuff got there, but.
We could obviously talk physics, no, civics for a while, sorry.
Physics and civics, yes.
I'm thinking, yeah, physics with the sewer stuff, but yeah.
But we have one more, and I think we're short on time.
So, so everybody understands, Article 19 is paired with Article 21.
Yes.
Article 21 is a system, so if Article 19 passes, Article 21 will just be indefinitely postponed, because Article 19 is effectively Article 21 just sponsored by the Select Board.
Right.
So everybody understands that. Article 20 is a second citizen's petition, and that would require a public vote on any use of free cash in excess of a million dollars. Now, right now, any debt exclusion or any piercing of the 2.5% cap does have to go to a voter, a vote, whether it's for operating or debt. Right now, free cash is money that's left over at the end of a year, and there's a whole elaborate policy on how that's spent and how it's allocated. There has not been an allocation except for capital stabilization or things like that of a million or more in time I've been here. So what this would do is, this article would require a separate election to be had after a town meeting action on any use of a million dollars or more of free cash. And I think both of the boards are recommended, recommended not to approve this article.
Yes. My board, somebody on our board, I don't remember who, characterized it perhaps as a solution in search of a problem.
Completely agree.
And that elections are cumbersome and expensive, and that sometimes thing, without knowing what the problem potentially would be, you could envision a situation where that requirement would cause the town to miss out on a program, such as some of these state programs, where we could get substantial matching or something else. So it was unanimously, I believe it was unanimously.
It was.
The Select Board agrees, we did not think this was necessary and thought it could maybe lead to more problems than what it's trying to help.
Okay. So that's Article 20, and so that concludes the warrant. So we've just had a good, robust conversation on the town meeting warrant. All of you should have it in your mailboxes.
Yes.
You can see it online, more information is available on the town's website, on the YouTube page, you can watch all of, excuse me, the public hearings. And I want to thank Rob Hilton, the Chair of the Advisor Committee, Kerry Thompson, the Chair of the Select Board, for joining me today.
Our pleasure.
Good conversation. I want to thank everyone who took part in the creation of this warrant, and there were literally dozens upon dozens, actually hundreds of people who participated.
Absolutely.
All the committees, all of the meetings, all the staff, really, this, this takes a lot of work.
Yes.[1751.97]